Supervisor Chukri, are you on the line?
I'm on the line, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, wonderful. Thank you, thank you so much for joining us. Then we will go ahead and gavel this meeting to order. Thanks, everyone, for being here today for this meeting of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors. We will start this meeting today, as we always do, with the prayer and the pledge. And today, we would like to welcome up our guest, who's going to be joining us for that, Cindy Tercero. She is the PUHSD Family and Community Engagement Manager. And she has been invited by District Five. Is Cindy with us today? Please, come on up. And if you could all please stand for the prayer.
Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, Spirit of justice, we ask for your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Help them as leaders to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but what do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen? Grant them and us with the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right and good and true. May they and we seek out when it is time to seek out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they and we always be guided in the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. And in honor of American Education Week, I'm also asking that we bless our teachers, administrators, and district leaders. Bless this meeting today, all those that are present. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tercero, for joining us, for your words, and for leading us in the pledge today. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Sellers.
Present.
Supervisor Chukri.
Here.
Thank you. Supervisor Hickman.
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo. And Chairman Gates.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, now, at this time, we will have one of our regular guests to the Board of Supervisors meetings. Great to see him today. That's Jose Santiago with Maricopa County Animal Care and Control. And look at this. Oh, my goodness.
A whole parade.
I brought special guests today, if you could.
Wow.
This is the mom of these four pups that you see in my lovely assistant's hands. Amber's actually one of our field lieutenants, and obviously no Jen Pocorski. But we wanted to bring these guys and gals, well, there's only one guy, and the rest are gals, in so that people can see that we get all types of animals at the shelter, not just the ones that people typically think that they would see.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to join. I just can't. Okay, sorry, please, go ahead, Jose.
It's also very important for people to know that these types of dogs are the ones that help to sustain the lives of the other animals at the shelter, a lot of the times. We label these dogs "shelter superheroes" because they really are superheroes for the shelter. Each one of these adoptions would be $300 apiece, and that would save the life of seven other animals. So we've got five dogs here, so we're talking about 35 other dogs that are going to be saved because of the adoption of these particular animals. So we want people to see this, and if we may, we also want to put out a plea to the general public that this is now the giving season for a lot of folks, and we desperately are in need of things like food and toys and blankets at the shelter. So if people are out there and they find that they have extra of these items in their home, we would gladly take them as donations right now, because the shelters are quite full. So we, again, wanted to showcase, I'll have my lovely assistants turn around again. All five of them will go up for adoption tomorrow, so we will, they will still be at the shelter another day, and they'll be at the West Shelter, so.
Wow. Well, Jose, you have quite a way to bring down the house. And, thank you, but good reminder to all of us of the great work that Animal Care and Control does, and especially those shelter superheroes there. Thanks so much, and I imagine, I don't know if those dogs are going to get out of here. I think I saw several people raising their hands in the back already, so thanks so much. We're really excited today to be going through many employee service awards. We all, all of us here up on the dais know that our most valuable asset, without a question, are the great men and women who work for Maricopa County, and we're going to be reminded of that today, and really excited about the opportunity to recognize so many great people in their years of service. So with that, I'd like to call up Jan Plank, our HR Director. Jan?
Good morning, Chairman Gates, Board of Supervisors, and County Manager Rich. We are excited, we are actually going to top those puppies, okay?
Whoa.
Thirty and 35-year employees that we're honoring today. So we're going to get started. We'd ask that the board come forward for photos with these honorees and the leaders of the award recipients, as soon as we call their name, if the leaders could join the employee while they receive their plaque and get a photo with the board as well. We're going to start with celebrating 30 years of service from adult probation, Michelle Albo. Michelle, come on up. Michelle serves as an adult probation officer in the SMI Mental Health Unit. Although Michelle acknowledges that her job can be thankless at times, she also notes that there have been times that something she said or did resonated with a probationer, a family member, or a victim, that caused a turnaround in someone's life. Her peers described Michelle as grounded and humble, which helped her to earn the 2014 Law Enforcement Office of Distinction Award for working with probationers classified as seriously mentally ill. Michelle does remember the days of going from wang to dell, and also recalls going out in the field with no safety equipment. She's looking forward, though, to making more green chili in the years ahead, which is her favorite, and rafting the Colorado River. So congratulations, Michelle. There you go, there you go. And we're waving the $300, no, no. Our next award recipient, Jamie Collins, serves as an adult probation officer supervisor, and she's had many promotions over her 30-year career. She started with the county in 1989 as a court information processor in criminal court administration. She recalls being really disappointed about not getting a spring break after coming to work here right out of college, but was very excited about the $9.72 an hour she was making. Jamie's husband, Scott, is a junior high teacher in the Peoria Unified High School District, and her three kids have supported her all these years through prayer and being there for her. So Jamie, congratulations. Our next honoree, Cynthia Huth, serves as a judicial clerk in adult probation. Cynthia started as a court information processor back in the day with a typewriter and a dictaphone. She looks back and cherishes the fact that she's made some lifetime friends here at the county. Her supervisor, Ramona Demian, describes Cynthia as patient, committed, passionate, organized, and dependable. Cynthia received peak performance awards in '06, '07, '09, '10, and '11, along with several pride awards. She carries with her a spirit of humility and says her greatest joy is knowing that through her work, she made a difference in small ways so people could improve their lives. Diane Newfer has faithfully served as an adult probation officer for the past 30 years. Diane began her career with us supervising a caseload in the Marivale area, but has worked in pre-sentencing for the past 20 years. Diane has reviewed over 4,000 cases over the past 30 years, which resulted in recommendations to the court before a defendant is sentenced. As she indicated, especially when her kids were young, it was tough to do that, but she did it with objectivity and dedication. She's a mentor and has been a glass-full person with the ability to separate family with the stress of being a probation officer. Thank you, Diane, for your dedication and the impact you've had over the past 30 years. Our next awardee is Eva Maria Lessing, also an adult probation officer. Eva's earned several college degrees while working for the county through our tuition reimbursement program. She encourages newcomers to stay and take advantage of all the education and promotional opportunities. And get this, Eva enjoys thrift store shopping for antique furniture and Makasa china. Eva, I have a set. My two millennial boys have told me they're not interested in it. So I'm going to set you up, okay? All right. Eva remembers when court reports were dictated and then translated, and now she's grateful they're submitted electronically. Greg Miller, also from adult probation, currently serves as a supervisor in the fugitive apprehension unit. Greg's a popular guy, as you can see by the applause. His team of 11 apprehend about 100 probationers a month, who have a warrant out for a variety of offenses or who have absconded from probation. Greg describes himself as a low-key guy who's not comfortable being in the spotlight. So Greg, I know you're enjoying being up there. I know you're having a great time. His advice to newbies is to participate in that deferred compensation smart savings plan. So thank you, it's a plug for us. Our next honoree, Gustavo Rodriguez, started with the county as a courier for the county hospital. He now serves as a judicial clerk in adult probation. Gustavo traveled to Guanajuato last Christmas and enjoys various parts of Mexico and the natural beauty and great food he has experienced there. His peers call him "just good people", like that. No matter what the job, mail courier, 1989, or clerk, he's given his heart and soul to Maricopa County. Fugitive apprehension officer and former probation officer of the year, Derek Knott, has served the county for 35 years. Although Derek has been committed to his work for three and a half decades, he does cite his greatest accomplishment as having an awesome wife, four amazing children, and four equally amazing grandchildren. He's known for providing a tremendously calming influence when things are going crazy at work. We all need him, don't we? Huh? Stop by our unit. His peers described him as saving their lives on a number of occasions. So congratulations, Derek, and thank you. Also celebrating 35 years with Maricopa County is Olivia Ramirez. Olivia started her career with the county attorney's office and has joined numerous promotions over the years. She currently serves as a judicial clerk supervisor. Her greatest joy is seeing all of the staff that she has trained move on in their careers and promote within the system. She's described by her supervisor as being loyal, dependable, responsible, kind-hearted, and helpful. She received Employee of the Year recognition from adult probation and was her Supervisor of the Year in 2014. She is an expert on the adult probation tracking system and often provides much-needed historical information. You're fabulous, Olivia, congratulations. Sheila Mae Smalls has provided citizens assistance with lost pets, adoption information, and a host of other services at Animal Care and Control as a dispatcher for many years. She started with the county as a housekeeping supervisor with the county medical center back in 1989. Sheila Mae now provides training to new Animal Care and Control officers and an overview of the many services that ACC provides to our citizenry. Her advice to new staff is to maintain a good attendance record. Sheila, I like it. Respect your supervisors and follow policies. All right. She's got a reputation for being the solid rock of the dispatch team. She loves to travel, and her time off has been to Ireland, England, and Scotland. And I know all the thousands of four-legged furry friends and their owners. Thank you, Sheila Mae, for all you've done the past 35 years. Our next awardee from the county attorney's office is Cheryl Burnside, a lead legal support specialist in the Drug Enforcement Bureau. Cheryl started with the county at the clerk of the court in customer service. She has received recognition as Support Staff of the Year, Division Employee of the Year, and Employee of the Year. Congratulations. Her supervisor, Sandra Connor, describes Cheryl as loyal, committed, knowledgeable, and honest. She states that Cheryl always goes the extra mile without hesitation. Stephanie Wade credits Cheryl as being the primary reason she achieved the role of supervisor at MCAO, because Cheryl saw the potential in her and helped her develop the necessary skills. Congratulations, Cheryl, on 30 years of service. Laura Summers currently serves as a legal support specialist with the county attorney's office. She started with the county in adult probation. For 35 years, she's contributed to the effort to make sure that justice is served and has been committed to both defendants and the public. She learned over the years to figure out why her work was important and how it fit into the big picture. Over 35 years, she's raised two children and is now blessed with three grandchildren. Very much deserving of this award, Laura. I've had a nice conversation with her the other day. You're awesome. And we've got a special guest today with us. I'm going to ask Luis to come up. Luis Antonio Higuerera is here for 30 years, helping to keep our environment safe, and he's got his grandson, Luis, who's with us today from Sonora, as is much of his family. But I thought little Luis, we wanted him to come up for the photo with our director. Luis is particularly proud of the fact that he was the first Spanish liaison for the department, and that he played a key role in implementing the food processors inspection program. He tells new employees they can expect great things when they work for the county. He was born and raised in Mexico, came to the States in his early 30s, and he credits his spiritual background for his success and wisdom in tackling issues on the job and off. So congratulations, Luis. And little Luis, we're recruiting, so I hope to see him at Maricopa County someday, okay? All right. Valerie Martinez, a maintenance contract coordinator with Facilities Management, started with the county 30 years ago as a summer runner with the county attorney's office. Val well remembers the minimum wage back in 1989. It was a whopping $3.35 an hour, and she earned every penny of it, right? All right. Val reviews contract terms and project scope, conducts building equipment and maintenance inspections, and maintains preventative and corrective maintenance records and schedules. We are very grateful for her work, especially June, July, August, right? Okay, congratulations, Val. Jamie Barbosa Hendershot celebrates 30 years with us in juvenile probation and is currently serving as a transfer officer. She believes that a quest for personal power has no place when working in probation, especially with youth. She's honored to have been entrusted with being able to investigate the lives of families and serve as a resource for change, helping to drive situations towards a positive outcome. I believe Jamie's husband may be with us today, is that correct? He is retired from adult probation, and they met at NAU. They have four lovely children. Congratulations, Jamie. Another outstanding juvenile probation officer, Paul Hamstra, joins us today, celebrating 30 years. He started with the county, working with youth in detention. He knows how to kneel down for photos, so I don't know. Paul has a great demeanor working with families, truly cares about the families and juveniles with whom he works, and he does all he can to help them. Thank you for everything you've done over the years. Michael Rosowitz, a building inspector with Planning and Development, joined the county 30 years ago as a technician one with flood control. He notes that technology and traffic have become more intense over the years, as has his tolerance for both, as he has aged. I think we can all attest to that. Daniel Fenter at P&amp;D says that they're able to send Mike out on however many inspection stops he has on any given day. He has a very positive outlook and never complains about his heavy workload. Super job, Mike, thank you for the last 30 years of service. Our last, but certainly not least, honoree is celebrating 35 years of service, Yolanda Escahida. Yolanda? Yolanda serves as an intake specialist with public health. She began her work with us as a WIC worker in 1984. Those were the days when she was bringing home $300 per pay period, huh? It's no coincidence, then, that Yolanda's favorite song back in the day was sung by Donna Summer, "I Work Hard For My Money". She currently works hard for her money at the 16th Street and Roosevelt location, where she's been helping to support nursing mothers for years. Yolanda is a lifelong learner, is bilingual, and is currently learning sign language to better serve her community. Special thanks, Yolanda. And congratulations, what an awesome group of employees. And I'm going to let the family members and awardees, if you'd like to leave, you can stay if you like, but we'll let you go if you want to.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out that it is so nice to see all of you here for your 30th, but it's great, because I finally get to meet Paul Hamstra in his official capacity. And Tiffany's going to stand up. Paul and Tiffany were the parents of our starting center. I wonder why, when I coach them, so thanks, great to see you both.
That's great.
Sorry, I didn't mean to ignore you.
That's funny.
Yeah, they were.
Yeah, the coach called them, Paul, Paul Bingham.
All right, well, again, great presentation of all those awards, sure appreciate all those longtime employees and their friends and family coming out, and coworkers coming out to support them as well. So, got a little smaller crowd now, but we can start plowing through the items here. We're going to move to the planning and zoning consent agenda. We have PZ1, which is Toy Barn North. PZ2 is Arizona Desert Testing LLC. PZ3 and PZ4 is Pacific Proving Grounds. And PZ5 and PZ6, Sunstream's PVS Solar Project. Now, I just wanted to check on PZ3 and 4. Madam Clerk, do we have any changes on those items?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it is on PZ4, and it's on page 10 of your agenda. This is the Pacific Proving Grounds, and it's simply to delete stipulation B2, which has to do with some approval from the city of Mesa. So that particular stipulation is deleted. I don't believe there's any opposition to that.
All right, and we don't have any speaker slips on these items?
I have none on these items, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yes. Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we jump into our planning and zoning portion, I just wanted real quickly to thank Cynthia Tercero, who came today for our invocation, our pledge. As you know, I'm rarely late, but it was raining today that, it was raining today. So it was raining today, and I was rushing as fast as I can, but thank you, Cindy, for what you do for Phoenix Union. On another hat, I serve on the Phoenix Union High School Governing Board, and she works tirelessly, just entrenched in the community. And most recently, they opened up at Carl Hayden High School, a community inventory-type store, and it's literally, if you walk into it, really looks like a store for students that need hygiene products, need socks, needs a shirt, need, just a simple jacket. These students are able to go in there privately and be able to collect the items they need so they can be productive on the campus. We're hoping to, I had a discussion with our superintendent, I want to duplicate it at all our schools, because it's just an excellent opportunity for students. And also, she works really close with the city of Phoenix and the color, the city purple on the domestic violence issue. We worked together on a couple, a little community outreach program, but she does a wonderful job in our community, in our schools, and so when we had to call someone, we called her, and she'd be perfect to have here. So thank you so much, not only for coming here, but for everything you do on behalf of Phoenix Union and our community. You do such a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you, and I can assure you, she did a wonderful job with the prayer.
Did she?
So as usual, a great recommendation there, Supervisor Gallardo. So we don't have any speaker slips, then, on these items? I would entertain a motion with that, with that one deletion of stipulation B2 on PZ4.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you for the second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. The next item on planning and zoning is PZ7, which is the Daisy Mountain Area Plan. And Jen, if you'd like to come up and join us? And Jen, before you get started, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you and your entire team for your tireless work on this. You know, when I came onto the Board of Supervisors, there was a lot of talk out in the community about our area plan, concerns about the area plan out there, and so we took a look at it and decided that we needed to redo it. It had been many years, and so the community outreach that you did was fabulous. Many evening meetings, plus a lot of good discussions out at my monthly meeting that I do there, the third Tuesday of the month. So again, just thanks to you and your entire team.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. I'd like to turn it over to Matt Holm to give an overview of the plan and our public participation strategy. Matt?
Good morning, Matt.
Morning.
Good to see you.
You too. Good morning, members of the board. The next agenda item is KCPA 2019-010, which is consideration of the Daisy Mountain Area Plan, as I mentioned. The planning area is located in District 3 and generally includes the communities of New River, Desert Hills, and Anthem, as you see up on your screen. This area was, this area plan was last updated in 1999, and since much has changed in the planning area with respect to growth-related issues, an update was both necessary and beneficial. So for any planning effort like this to be successful, an effective public outreach process is necessary. And I want to briefly talk about the broad and extensive public outreach process that was used in this case, and then some of the outcomes that resulted as a result. From the outset, the county sent approximately 9,500 postcards to residents and property owners in the planning area, announcing the beginning of the update process and also of the November 2018 kickoff workshop that was held at the Desert Mountain School. This initial notice also included information about how to register to be included on future communications. In addition to these postcards, notices were also sent to various community groups in the area, such as the New River Community Alliance, the New River Desert Hills incorporation committee, Anthem Community Council, New River Desert Hills Community Association, Foothills Focus Newspaper, and all of the surrounding cities and towns, as well as the state land department. This workshop that we had was well-attended. We had a little bit over 200 people. Just before the first workshop that was held, the county opened an online survey to allow anyone to share their ideas and concerns that they felt needed to be addressed in the plan. The county held a second community workshop, again at the Desert Mountain School, in December of 2018, to gather additional information and input and to begin discussing potential policies and strategies based on the input that we had received up to that point. A second online survey was opened shortly thereafter to allow all participants to share their thoughts and strategies as well. Over the next several months, as the draft plan was being prepared...
issues, an update was both necessary and beneficial. So, for any planning effort like this to be successful, an effective public outreach process is necessary. And I want to briefly talk about the broad and extensive public outreach process that was used in this case, and then some of the outcomes that resulted as a result. From the outset, the county sent approximately 9,500 postcards to residents and property owners in the planning area, announcing the beginning of the update process, and also of the November 2018 kickoff workshop that was held at the Desert Mountain School. This initial notice also included information about how to register to be included on future communications. In addition to these postcards, notices were also sent to various community groups in the area, such as the New River Community Alliance, the New River Desert Hills incorporation committee, Anthem Community Council, New River Desert Hills Community Association, Foothills Focus Newspaper, and all of the surrounding cities and towns, as well as the state land department. This workshop that we had was well-attended. We had a little bit over 200 people. Just before the first workshop that was held, the county opened an online survey to allow anyone to share their ideas and concerns that they felt needed to be addressed in the plan. The county held a second community workshop, again, at the Desert Mountain School in December of 2018, to gather additional information and input, and to begin discussing potential policies and strategies based on the input that we had received up to that point. A second online survey was opened shortly thereafter to allow all participants to share their thoughts and strategies as well. Over the next several months, as the draft plan was being prepared, staff received additional ideas and recommendations regarding key issues. Once the draft plan was complete, the county held a third community workshop, this time in Anthem, and that was in June of this year, to go over the contents, as well as key issues and strategies, and to solicit input for a final draft of the plan that was forthcoming. Now, based on this input, a final draft was completed, and a final community workshop was held, again, at the Desert Mountain School this past September. I will also note that throughout this process, both during plan preparation, as well as during draft review of the plan, staff met with and discussed issues and strategies with various community groups, as you see up here. These meetings were very helpful. They helped us identify key issues, since these groups are effective representatives of their constituents. And they also provided valuable feedback on the various drafts, which was very much appreciated. In addition to the highly interactive community workshops and community group meetings we had, I will also note that the county posted the various drafts on the Planning and Development Department website, and set up a special email address exclusively for anyone to submit their comments, concerns, ideas, and recommendations. So, overall, staff believes that the public outreach process was effective. By using multiple methods of gathering input, the county was able to capture both the quantity, as well as the quality of input necessary, to create the plan that you see up on your screen today. In summary, staff believes that this plan represents a sensible, practical, balanced approach to future growth. One last point I will touch upon. At the Planning and Zoning Commission's October 24 hearing, staff recommended, and the commission unanimously concurred, that the name of this plan should be changed to the Daisy Mountain Area Plan. During plan preparation, many members of the community expressed a desire to use a name that was truly representative of the entire region, and inclusive of the three unique communities that we have up there, namely New River, Desert Hills, and Anthem. So, thus, this plan comes to you from the commission as the Daisy Mountain Area Plan. I will note there was a handout that was provided to you today with some emails that we have received. Since the commission hearing on October 24, we have received eight emails of opposition to the name change, and two emails in support of the name change. And finally, approval of this plan would be by resolution, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Chairman and members of the board, I would also like to add on to Matt's comments is that we've really appreciated the community in remaining engaged throughout this process, which was, you know, over a year in the making. And during that time, you know, we heard from them that rural is very important to them, maintaining that lifestyle that they currently have. And the changes that were made to the plan, including removing the town center that was on state land, was done in response to the community, and that received overwhelming support. Most of the recommendations in the plan have received overwhelming support. The one question that's been out there is what Matt mentioned, is the name change. Staff made that recommendation. During the process, we let everyone know that we were remaining open to if we were going to change the name. It wasn't our main goal, we had said, in setting out and starting the plan. Our main goal was to identify what this community should look like in the future. But as the plan progressed, we heard more and more from groups that, in the unique communities of New River, and Desert Hills, and Anthem, that they wanted something that was more inclusive and represented the region. And based on those comments, based on analysis that staff did for how we name other area plans, for example, we have the White Tanks Grand Avenue Plan in District 4, and that's named based on White Tank Mountains, and then a major road in the area. And then, also looking at how, for example, just using an analogy of the Daisy Mountain Fire Department, which is where we had some of our meetings regarding this plan, that serves those three communities, and has a name that represents a well-known feature in the area. So, based on our analysis going into the Planning and Zoning Commission, we made a recommendation to call it the Daisy Mountain Area Plan. That doesn't change the name of the communities. In fact, we recognize the history of New River, have a special section on the history of New River in the plan. So, based on that recommendation, the Planning and Zoning Commission accepted it. And then, we sent out another postcard to everybody that's been engaged, letting them know about that, and asking them for their feedback. So, we have received these emails. Our understanding, based on some other comments from the stakeholders, is that some groups have started a small petition posing the name, that I believe has about 200 people that signed it. But we have not heard from those people directly. We've only heard from the A people that we've received the emails from, and then continued support from the other groups. So, I just wanted to clarify a little bit as to how we came up with that recommendation, and to let you know that there are a few remaining concerns in the community regarding it. So, I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Great. Any questions from my colleagues? Jen and Matt, again, thanks to both of you for everything you did. You know, this has been a great process. And first and foremost, it is about the development in the future in the area. There have been lots of concerns. This is a beautiful area, so a lot of people have been wanting to move out there. And it's very important, in the time that we spend out in that area, that we appreciate that the people who live out there already like the nature of the community. They want to keep it the way that it is, and maintain that rural lifestyle. And that is the main thrust of this plan, from my perspective, especially the town center issue that created a lot of concern in the community, that there is going to be dense development. I'm not supportive of that in the area. In this area plan, certainly indicates that the people who live out there feel the same way. There have been a lot of issues people have been grappling with out there, including water, traffic, and so that's another one of the motivations for this plan. You know, there's so many people to thank who were involved in this, but it was great to see how the different communities came out. And again, to have hundreds of people at a meeting, not to, you know, oppose a particular zoning case, but instead to speak about how they want to see their area look in the future. That was really exciting to see, but it's not surprising, because this is such an active and engaged group, and I think they really embraced that opportunity to be out there. There are a lot of people who wanted to be here today. It's, as we all know, it's a long drive down here, and even, you know, with the rain and everything that was referenced here earlier. So, a lot of those people have reached out to me and said, you know, they apologize for not coming down, but they are supportive of the plan. And certainly, you know, with regard to the name change, that's something that there are some strong feelings on both sides of this. You know, we... The Anthem Community Council, I want to recognize them, and for all their involvement. And Neil Share, the head of that group, does a great job representing the community, very actively involved. And of course, the New River Desert Hills Community Association, Ed Taylors, the president of that organization, and that whole organization, has been involved in this for years, even before I came onto the Board of Supervisors. So, I'm grateful to all of them. And I see the wisdom in changing to the Daisy Mountain name. I think it does send a message of inclusion out there, and so I appreciate that. And I think that's why the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to change the name to Daisy Mountain. Having said that, this area has been, as has been articulated previously to me, and maybe here from one of our speakers that we're going to hear from soon, that this area has historically been known as New River. And so, that's important to me. And so, once we get to a motion on this, that hopefully one of my colleagues will make, I think that it may make sense to combine those concepts in something like a Daisy Mountain New River Area Plan, like you referenced in District 4, that's White Tanks and, did you say Grand Avenue? So, I think those concepts make some sense. But with that, I'd like to invite David Thompson up to speak.
I'd like to begin very quickly. I have no problem with the plan. I think it was well-done and well-cooperated on. The problem I have is with changing the name. I found many references from the mid-19th century, 1845, and so, they call it New River. It's been called New River for a very, very long time. It was New River to the people that moved out there. Our progenitors, that homesteaded that area in the early 1900s, it was New River. All of that was New River. Yet, now, when history is falling behind us, and history is our guide, we're changing the name to something else. Perhaps you wouldn't have gotten as much pushback if you call it Gavelin Peak. It's a geographic landmark out there. It's an extinct volcano core that sticks up, and is the first thing you see coming down the freeway towards Phoenix and into Maricopa County. A more simple name would have been North Maricopa County. That's exactly what it is. But historically, people have called it New River. It has been New River. And to change it, and to remove that from the planning area denies it. In 10 years or 20 years, when the next plan comes out, it's 20 since the last one, maybe 10 for the next one, it'll be something else, probably Phoenix. We object not to the plan. We think the plan was well-done, and well-thought-out, and well-presented. The name, however, came to our attention after the very last review meeting. It was not announced publicly. It was none of the stuff we saw. And we specifically asked, and Jen answered exactly the way she said she did. It's not an exercise in renaming. It's an exercise in planning for the area. She is completely correct in what she said. There are total now 250-something signatures on that. We kept it open. Now, there's, of course, there's names in there like Joe Blow, John Smith, because anytime you take a picture, there's always somebody behind you photobombing. But there's probably 200 residents of New River, Desert Hills, and even Anthem that object to the name change. That's the only objection we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, and thanks for being a regular attendee at my meetings out there as well. So, good to see you. Next, we have Jason Pfeifer. Thanks for joining us. Again, thanks both of you for coming all the way down here in the rain. We really appreciate that.
It's 36 miles.
There you go.
Hi, I'm Jason Pfeifer. I'm director of the New River Desert Hills Community Association. I'd like to voice my support in the change in the name. Like you said, it encompasses the whole area. Times have changed. We need to adapt to it, include everybody. Anthem is new relatively to the rest of New River. So, in favor of New River Desert Hills Community Association, we approve of it, and we thank you guys for all your work. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Jason, and thanks for taking on the leadership role up there. We really appreciate that. All right, and so, those are the two speaker slips that we have on this item. Again, in light of those comments, I think those are supportive of the comments that I made earlier, that moving forward with this plan, which was a great, great piece of work, and is going to be really instructive in the years ahead. I think we'll try and not go 20 years before updating that plan, and I think from here, we're going to be updating other plans throughout the county. I know that's something as chair that I think is really important. But in light of that, I think this plan makes a lot of sense, being known as the Daisy Mountain New River Plan. So, with that, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval. PZ7, I believe? Is it 7?
Yes. That's correct. Thank you for the motion. Supervisor Gallardo, do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, that motion passes unanimously. Thanks again to everyone for their work on this. All right, next, we'll move on to statutory hearings. Clerk of the Board, we have number 6, which is liquor license applications. A is a new license for Sun Health Grand View Terrace. B is owner transfer for Tonto Verde Golf Club. And C and D are special event license for the Sun City West Boomers Club, Theater West, and International Mountain Bicycling Association. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker slips on items 6A through D?
Mr. Chairman, we do not have any speaker slips, but I wish to make note of the fact that on 6D, which is a special event license for Theater West, they, at their request, they are withdrawing their application.
All right, so thank you. So, what... So, then, that moves International Mountain Bicycling Association is E remains. So, it looks like it's listed here as D. Perfect. Thank you for that clarification. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval for items 6A, B, C, and E.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair. Do we have a second? Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, under Clerk of the Board, we have 7, impact statement for proposed Ocatillo Estates Irrigation Water Delivery District. We have 8, which is petitions for the formation of the proposed Wild Horse Ranch Irrigation Water Delivery District. 9, deannexation from the City of Chandler and annexation to the Town of Gilbert. Under transportation, we have 10A through N road files, as listed on the agenda. And 10O is to be continued to the December 11, 19 meeting. And then, 11 is patent easement abandonment road file number PAB0094. Do we have any speaker slips on these items?
Mr. Chairman, yes. On items 7 and 8, we do have speaker slips. If you'd like to take the remaining items, noting that that 10O is continued to 1211, then we could come back to these two.
Perfect. All right, so do we have a motion with respect to 9, 10, and 11 with that continuance on 10O? Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. All right, so then, we will move up to number 7, which is for the Ocatillo Estates Irrigation Water Delivery District.
Mr. Chairman, I'll read these into the record, and then these are in favor. These are opposed.
Okay, great. So, we will have our clerk read into the record the speaker slips here in support, that do not wish to speak, in support of item number 7.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the following have submitted a speaker slip simply indicating that they are in favor of the Ocatillo Estates, but they did not wish to speak. So, their names are Barry Silverman, George Ann Silverman, Mary Cosgrove, Glenda Witten, Joseph McCallum, Peter Tobman, Tamra Smith, Timothy Borg, Peter Hildebrandt, Gregory Dunn, Jamie Hester, James Bycroft, Cheryl Bycroft, Elizabeth Lonetti, Amy Sloan, Rory McKenzie, Lynn McKenzie, Ginger Sykes Torres, TT Lola... Oh, I'm so sorry if I'm ruining your name. TT Lola Apolabi, Geraldo Mione, Jim Armstrong, Margaret Lockhead, and Margaret Henry.
All right, excellent. Well, thank you for all those. And so, now, I will move to, let's see, we have our first speaker here in favor, and the name is Shelby Kova? Is that correct?
Quavis.
Quavis? My apologies.
No worries. Thank you very much, Chairman Gates and members of the board. My name is Shelby Quavis, and I'm one of the neighbors in District 3 that's in favor of creating the Ocatillo Estates water, Irrigation Water Delivery District. Our current method for repairing our very, very old irrigation system is, we have a kindly irrigator who will fix minor and inexpensive problems. For problems that are a little more complicated, and maybe, you know, a couple hundred dollars, there are a handful of neighbors that will get together, hire somebody, pay the bill. If it's a bigger, more complicated problem than just a couple hundred dollars, we pass the hat, hope for the best. And frankly, this summer, we missed more water than we received. So, the idea of the Irrigation Water Delivery District, and its promotion of a system that is transparent, efficient, and that creates an equitable process for maintaining the system, is very, very attractive to our neighbors. We all benefit from living in a neighborhood with access to flood irrigation. The creation of the Irrigation Water Delivery District would protect our investment in not only the irrigation infrastructure, not only our homes and their value, but also the beauty and shady, lovely neighborhood that we live in. I would be remiss if I didn't mention how much we appreciated the help and responsiveness of Lori Maderas in the Clerk of the Board's office. She's been fantastic. She attended meetings, and has given lots of time and insight on how to work the process. She attended a couple of the meetings that we had in the neighborhood, and I also just wanted to mention that we were very concerned about drawing a boundary that included anybody who had access to irrigation, or had a pipe running through their yard. that included anybody who had access to irrigation or had a pipe running through their yard, not just the people who receive water. Because if there's a problem in somebody's yard, even if they don't receive water, it's going to have an impact downstream. So we want to make sure that everybody in the neighborhood who could be impacted is protected by the protections offered by the Irrigation Water Delivery District. So we thank you for your support as we pursue this opportunity, and we hope that we're given permission to collect signatures. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down today. Next, we have Jim Smith. Morning.
My name is Jim Smith. I'm also a 13-year resident of the neighborhood. Also, I'm a landscape architect, so I have a little bit of a different perspective on this. But I moved into the neighborhood for two reasons. One was the irrigation. The other was the schools. My kids have long passed the schools, or they're well on their way out. So that is God. What remains is the irrigation district. All of the things that Shelby said are absolutely true and the reason that we're here for that. But I would like you to think about the central irrigation district as an area. When you think about flying over Phoenix or flying over the whole metropolitan area, there are definite character areas that happen. And the central corridor with the trees, and there's a very definitive one that you can see from the sky, and it's a very strong character component of the Phoenix area. People know Central Avenue. They know the area. They know how green it is and all of that that comes with that. As she said, school repairs have always been very difficult for us. It's always been a pass the hat, hope for the best. And so far, we've had a few good neighbors that have helped us kind of push that through each year and each summer. And this last summer was especially bad, so I think that's why we're, one of the reasons that we're here. The Irrigation District will help maintain the character of the neighborhood and will help coalesce everybody in that neighborhood as well. So I'm here in favor of supporting the Irrigation District, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Art Tanner speaking in favor. Is Mr. Tanner here? All right. Well, we have a slip from him in favor. Next, Matt Semen. All right. Also in favor, does not appear to be here. Eileen Armstrong in favor. All right. So we have all of those. And then I have, I guess those are, let's see, what else we have here? We have in opposition, do I have Ryan? I apologize, I can't read that last name. Do we have a Ryan out there who'd like to speak in opposition? Lee? My apologies.
Morning. Good morning. I live on a parcel that has been subdivided. I moved in a couple of years ago, a few years ago now, I guess, where I believe, according to the drawings that were provided to me in this packet that I received last Thursday, run along an easement that is a former alleyway. So I don't believe that the piping truly runs underneath my property in any way. So I guess just the core argument is, for me, is that the purpose of this meeting is that we're here to determine whether the creation of the district is to promote public health, comfort, convenience, necessity, and welfare. And as far as my arguments would go, and I'm not here to be argumentative, I feel like I'm a good neighbor. I feel like I'm a good, responsible person of the community, willing to help a hand in any way. But I mean, when you come to hear and say that this is a tax, I don't feel like I'm getting a benefit because the place that I live in does not receive any water at all through these pipes. And as a matter of fact, a lot of these parcels that are large acreage properties are now being subdivided into properties where there are going to be three homes, like mine was, six homes, like there's one on the other side of my property. So I feel like that's kind of like the trend going right now, is these older houses, which have large properties, are now being sold off and being parceled into properties which no longer will receive the benefit of any type of irrigation. So public health, in section E, there is a list of benefits. I don't see anything related to public health there. Comfort, for me, I don't believe that there's, I mean, if you call, they were saying, the grass, the trees, yeah, I get that, that's a comfort. But again, there's diminishing number of properties that would actually receive irrigation. Convenience, again, the number of properties receiving a convenience are diminishing. Mine, not getting any type of convenience whatsoever. Yes, I get that there's maintenance involved, but I don't see why there's fairness involved with pulling me into having to be taxed for that and contribute to the maintenance of that. And then the welfare, welfare is defined as the health, happiness, and fortunes of a person or group. In a taxing district, if that's passed, I don't believe that the full community, the full group would receive that. It's only going to be a subset of that, and I just don't feel that that's fair. Going on to that, just, I feel like, you know, an individual whose property line runs adjacent to the irrigation water line, and I'll never receive a drop of water from that is, again, fair. The benefits that were listed, it said that there was everyone will share equally in the maintenance and distribution of water. Again, going back to my argument there, everyone will contribute and everyone will profit by the formation of a water district. I think the word "everyone" is being used very loosely. I get it that there's maintenance involved, but I don't think that everyone should provide funding towards that. All of the benefits that were listed in there, I don't feel that they were benefits to me. Again, the other two were open business and community involvement. I feel like those are just statements. They're not truly benefits to me. And on top of all this, I mean, the way that the tax is laid out, because my property is larger, I will even be paying a larger tax than some of the properties that are receiving that benefit. So those are just some of the things that I don't, those are my arguments.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Lee, for joining us today. Madam Clerk, I think we've maybe seen these types of situations in the past.
Yes. Mr. Lee, could you show me on this map where your home is?
So the three of us that will be speaking, this one, actually, that one doesn't show this subparcel. This one does. And so... I'm embarrassed. So we're here at these three.
I understand.
A former alleyway that kind of goes, and that's where the pipe, I believe, goes.
What is?
This is 13th Street.
And so the one?
Yeah, right here. Okay, so right here. These three, one, two, three. Yeah.
Okay. But the pipe does go there.
There's an alleyway there, a former alley that used to be used for, it's a utility easement now.
And Mr. Lee, what we can do is follow up with you after the meeting, of course, as well. And my chief of staff is here, and we can even pull you after this item to talk about this more detail.
Wanted to know where it was.
Perfect. But thank you so much for raising these concerns. Next, William Schmidt to speak in opposition.
Mr. Gates, I'm?
Morning.
Good morning. I'm also one of the homes that Mr. Lee spoke about.
Okay. So kind of the second emotion, as it were?
Yeah, it is the exact same thing. But I did have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Shelby mentioned that there were meetings. Who was notified of those meetings and how come not everyone was included? Because we've never received any notification of any meeting regarding the creation of this water district. And there are also, if you look at the map that was sent out to us, there are properties that have been excluded. And what is the criteria for those properties that have been excluded? And why are we not being excluded? Because like Mr. Lee said, we receive not one drop of water. And basically, the same points as Mr. Lee, so I'm not going to keep reiterating.
Yeah. No, perfect. I appreciate that. I certainly understand why you're here, and same thing, we can follow up with you as well and make sure on that and on the notice. And just to make sure everyone does understand, I think everyone does, who's here, this would be today a vote by the board just to start the process, obviously, of circulating the petition. So this is not voting to approve it in any way. So this is the perfect time to be coming here and raising these issues so that we can get these issues straightened out. Any questions for Mr. Schmidt? Thanks for joining us. And then the final speaker slip here, I have an opposition, is Tony Olhausen. Troy?
Troy.
My apologies.
Thanks, Glenn.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Got to put my glasses on, I'm getting older these days. I am also in the same boat with our property as the other people who spoke also. And I'd like to just say a few things regarding the formation of the water district. You know, one of the things is that Arizona, we're in a drought community, and we understand, you know, that water is a precious resource. And using the water to irrigate grass lawns, while it may look pretty, you know, when they're talking about having to make water cuts because the lakes, like me, like Powell, these lakes are so far low, it's kind of, in the future, we're not going to be doing all this type of stuff. So creating a district that could potentially not be here in the future or need for isn't really a great use of our resource. One of the other things that I want to point out is that it's such a waste of water because in our neighborhood, if you were to drive in our neighborhood on irrigation days, there's a lot of times when the streets have water running down the streets because they're not maintaining, the current people aren't keeping the water in their yards like they're supposed to and not letting it run. They prop open the gates to let the water continue to go, and so water runs down the streets constantly, which is just a waste of that precious resource that we have. It also hurts the public health because it promotes mosquitoes, pests, and all those type of things in the neighborhood. You know, the need for this water district is going away down the road because of, you know, the drought conditions that affects Arizona constantly. One of the things that is in there that doesn't show is that, you know, there's over 30 properties in this district that is to be formed that have no access really to this water, not like our properties. We have, you know, there's a pipe that runs along the road, but we have no access to it. We can't use it. Our property was subdivided. So all these people are going to be injured by the formation of this because they have no access to the water, and they're going to be taxed to provide a service to other residents when they have no need for that. It's going to hurt their welfare. In addition, in the map, it doesn't show, but there's already other properties that are in the process of being subdivided and expanded. So that number is just going to go up as to properties that won't need and don't have access to the water. So you're going to be taxing people for services that they have no benefit of, have no right to use, and it isn't a necessity. It doesn't promote any, you know, it's not going to save anybody's life. It's not going to make the neighborhood safer, like public welfare or any of that. The petition states also that there's no need for any improvements. So if there's no, you know, when you read the actual petition that was filed, if there's no need for any improvements, then why are we going to form a district to harm the residents that don't use this service to have a district? So the petition specifically states there's no need for improvements. In addition, the impact statement says, it's supposed to have a five-year budget in there, which isn't provided. It actually just has, it doesn't even have a one-year budget. It just says we're going to tax amount for this amount, I think it's like $5,000 and something dollars for the first year, but it doesn't say what that money's used for. And it says for the five years, we're going to just use that, like $5,000 or $6,000, as the amount. Well, why would we need to form a district for $5,000 or $6,000 and pay for services that aren't really needed there? The proposed district, as I mentioned, doesn't include all the properties that the pipe runs alongside. There's a whole lot of properties that are on the south end of the district that the pipe runs next to their properties. They're not included, yet our property is included. And again, we have no access to this. So we're not sure how properties got included and excluded. We definitely want to be excluded from this. So in conclusion, there's no problem with the current way that the area is serviced. The people who are using the service, if there's a problem with their pipe, or if they have a problem with their yard, where they have the valves coming in their yard, they should pay for that themselves. It's not under the rest of the residents to pay for somebody else's so they can have, you know, water for their grass. You know, we have to pay for our own water for our grass. And actually, we took out our grass to be more, you know, environmentally conscious and put in fake turf to make it, you know, so that we are better residents of the community. This proposal is not necessary. It does not promote any public health. It doesn't achieve any comfort for the majority of the residents. It's inconvenient. It's not necessary, and it doesn't benefit the welfare of the residents, which are the requirements to create a district. I know, as I mentioned, there are other people who wanted to attend. They weren't able to make it here. When I've talked to them, unfortunately, I didn't know they could fill out a little form and just say that they're opposed to it, but weren't going to speak. But there are other people in the residence that do not want this. Again, because it does not, they don't use the water. It does not touch them, and they're not in favor of it. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time as well. And I just kind of looking over to our clerk, there was a suggestion that the budget wasn't properly completed, I guess, with the statutory requirements?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the impact statement only includes the first year budget.
Okay.
And the residents who are the proponents are the ones who come up with the budget for the first year. So in this particular case, they did include the budget, and many of the lots within the district, the average size is about .26 acre. The tax in the first year would be $33.27 per average lot size. If the lot size is a little bit bigger, it could be larger than that. I did check while they were speaking, and yes, the pipe does run through what might be an alley between these two homes, these two sets of homes.
Three sets.
However, if there is a break there and it damages their home in any way, there is a need for that to be covered in this. So we, and the other thing that I wanted to point out is, at the beginning of this, when it comes through, every address in the district is sent a notice. So we did send notices to every address within the district. So I'm not sure.
Unfortunately, us and I know of the other neighbors did not receive this notice for other hearings. Actually, one of the neighbors just received their notice for today's hearing last week. So...
Okay. But the notices have been sent.
But yeah, whenever this revised statute, it says it's supposed to be a five-year budget provided with this, and there's no, and it just says that the tax rate's going to be this for the number of properties, but it doesn't say what the money's supposed to be used for. It really doesn't give you any indication of confidence in what's going to happen with this district. Because, you know, if it says that there are no improvements needed, you know, why are we creating it? But if there is improvements needed and we have to have money in there, how come we don't know what that money is? You know, we don't want to have a blank check that we're going to give out to a taxing district. You know, once you create a taxing district, it's darn near impossible to get rid of them. So it's a big concern.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. And these are all the speaker slips that we have on this item for today. Again, I appreciate everyone coming down, all the work that's been put into this already. Again, as I mentioned earlier, this is simply a vote today. Again, if there is a motion to start the process, moving forward to circulate the petitions out in the area that is covered. And again, certainly, we have happy to have you all chat with my chief of staff here if you have any follow-up questions on the items that you raised today. So with that, I would entertain any, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk?
Just one other point that Lori has just reminded me of, that the budget that is submitted with the impact statement is the estimated budget for the first year. When the district is formed and the members have their meeting, that is when they create the five-year budget or the estimates for the five-year budgets that would be coming.
Okay, great. Thanks for that clarification, Lori. Appreciate that, and thank you, Madam Clerk. So with that, any discussion, or I would entertain a motion?
Mr. ... Mr. ...
Chairman.
Chairman.
Bill.
Yeah. I move that we approve or move forward item number seven, I believe. Yes, seven.
Thank you for the motion. Supervisor Gallardo, do we have a second? Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right. That motion passes unanimously. And again, this is just the first step in the process, and thanks to everyone who participated this morning. Next is item eight, and these are petitions for the formation of the proposed Wild Horse Ranch Irrigation Water Delivery District over in District Four. So, with that, any discussion, or I would entertain a motion?
Mr., Mr. ...
Chairman.
Chairman.
Bill.
Yeah. I move that we approve or move forward item number seven, I believe. Yes, seven.
Thank you for the motion. Supervisor Gallardo, do we have a second? Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right. That motion passes unanimously. And again, this is just the first step in the process, and thanks to everyone who participated this morning. Next is item eight, and these are petitions for the formation of the proposed Wild Horse Ranch Irrigation Water Delivery District over in District Four. So, looks like we have one speaker here who'd like to speak in favor of it. Mike? I'm not, I'm, what's that?
Bohannon.
Bohannon. Okay, thank you. I'm having some prob, I needed to bring the old readers with me today, I guess. Thank you, Mr. Bohannon, for joining us today.
Thank you. I'm Mike Bohannon. I'm one of the organizing trustees of this proposed district. I want to thank the board for considering this district and SRP for helping us put everything together. But I want to give a special thanks to Lori Maderas as well. She's helped us stay on track. She's helped us navigate all the legal paperwork and facilitate all the interdepartment and intercompany communications that we've needed to do. Now, our area is a small district, there's 35 properties, and they're all roughly one-acre properties. There's a couple that are bigger, a couple that are slightly smaller, but all within that same size. We're an aging system. We're about 40 years old. It's concrete pipe. A lot of that is crumbling and requires maintenance. Now, we've had yearly cleanings and plenty of leaks to repair over the years, and it's all been done by volunteers primarily. We've used the voluntary fund approach, and that's, was a success early on, but we had people move out, new people move in. There's a fair amount of apathy involved, and it's always been a chore to collect dues to repair these systems. So, we've always had the same neighborhood volunteers that volunteered to step up, repair pipes, organize cleanings, and do what they can to keep this system intact, two of which are the other trustees that are on this district proposal. If approved, our volunteers will still need to make the repairs because our budget isn't big enough to contract out major repairs. But we hope to build a fund big enough to cover our cleanings and possibly build a nest egg in case we do need to do some major repairs down the road. We hope you'll approve the district, and we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
And by the way, none of our properties are like the Yocatia District where there's pipe that, or properties that are not included in the area that would get water. Some don't take it, but they do have access to it. Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot. We don't have any other speaker slips, so I would entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval, item number eight.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second? Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right. That motion passes unanimously. Next, under the county attorney, we have 12 and 13, which are amend agreements with Scottsdale Healthcare Hospitals and Phoenix Children's Hospital, and 14, official appointments and oaths of office. The board will now consider items 12 through 14. Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I heard Supervisor Chukri out there.
Darn it.
Give him that second.
I totally beat him, Mr. Chairman. I know.[814.32][814.32](laughter)
We have motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next, under the county offices and departments, we have Air Quality 15, agreement with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Under Animal Care and Control, we have 16 through 18 donations. 19 through 21, New Hope Agreements. 22, amend the New Hope Agreement with Love for Dogs. 23 is a contract with the Greater Phoenix Chamber of Commerce. And great to see Todd Sanders and the rest of his team from the Greater Phoenix Chamber. Thanks so much for what you do in our community. Great to see you guys. And 24 is the ULTUS Project Budget Adjustment. The board will now consider items 15 through 24.
Move to approve items 15 through 24, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks for the second, Supervisor Sellers. Motion and a second. All in favor? Yeah, Supervisor Gallardo.
I'm sorry, just a quick comment. And I know we've had some discussions. I know our chiefs have been in great discussions, particularly over item number 23. And I appreciate what the chamber does, but I really do think that we need to take a step back and really evaluate, it's not just the chamber, there's others, of what we expect as a county. I mean, we're given an opportunity to work with many of these economic development-type organizations, and there should be some expectations. And unfortunately, I just don't see it in District Five. And I appreciate the work they do, but I really would like to see some expectations. Just, I would like to, at least, I don't want to pull it or anything like that, but just note the record that I do have strong concerns on 23, not just because of, not just Phoenix, but all of them, in what the services and what we get back for these types of agreements. So, I'll vote yes on all of them, but just note that number 23, I would think we should come back and really think about as we move forward.
Thank you for those comments. I appreciate that. So, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right. That motion passes. Under Finance, we have 25 through 26, Tribal Gaming Funds from the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian Community, Tahona Odom Nation. 27, Funds Transfers and Warrants. 28, Resolution for Lease and Lease Purchase of Certain Real Property and Issuance of Certificates of Participation. Under Human Resources, we have 29, Employee Discount Vendor Donation. 30, Medical Prescription and Behavioral Health Plan Changes and Rates. 31, Dental Benefit Rates. 32, Vision Benefit Rates. And 33, Voluntary Benefits Rates. The board will now consider items 25 through 33.
Move to approve items 25 through 33, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Under Human Services, we have 34 and 35, which is to amend IGAs with Scottsdale and Macy Unified School Districts. 36 is Arizona Public Service Company Agency Portal Agreement. 37 is an extension to an agreement with Vitalist Health Foundation, Vitalist. Under the Medical Examiner, 38 and 39, Affiliation Agreements with the Arizona Board of Regents and AT Still Soma. Under Procurement Services, we have 40, which is a contract with Ryan White Part A Program Consulting Services. 41, NeoGov Recruiting Services. And 42, Promotional Items. The board will now consider items 34 through 42.
Move to approve items 34 through 42, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Under Public Health, we have 43, which is to amend a contract with the City of Tempe. 44 and 45, to amend an IGA agreement with the Arizona Department of Health Services. And HF1D, Phoenix 1706 LLC. 46 is a contract with the Arizona Alliance for Community Health Centers. 47 is to rescind action regarding public use data agreement with the City of Glendale. 48 is an agreement with the State of Arizona Department of Transportation. And 49 is appointments to the Ryan White Planning Council. The board will now consider items 43 through 49.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you for the second, Supervisor Hickman. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Under Real Estate, we have the Equestrian Trail Dedication and Access Easement and amend the Maricopa Trail in Anthem. 51 is Transportation Easement Right-of-Way and Relocation Assistance Documents. Under the Board of Supervisors, we have 52 through 53, Resignations. 54 through 55, Appointments. And 56 through 58 are reappointments. And the, appreciate on item 50, appreciate the work with the Anthem Community Council on that one, as usual, great cooperation with them. The board will now consider items 50 through 58.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items number 50 through 58, and going to, of course, our supervisors' appointment. Both my chief of staff, they take double duty. She's being appointed as the, to the Head Start Zero-to-Five Policy Council. Chris, thank you for pulling that double duty. And Mr. Galavie, sink or swim, brother. He is being appointed to the Community Development Advisory Board. So, you know, they do their hard work every day, and under off-time, they're involved in these types of committees and representing District Five and the county, and so they're doing good stuff. And also, oh, almost forgot, Kerry Duncan, who, he's actually the Transportation Director for the Roosevelt Elementary School District, and he'll be serving on the Transportation Advisory Board. So, thank you to all three. I know we all have a lot of pointies, and they do great work. So, thank you for what they do.
And thank you for those comments, and I also want to recognize Nedra Haley. I'm the board's representative on the Board of Health. Want to thank her for her work and service there on that board for many years. And as well, Kim Akakurnon has been the District Three Representative on the Air Pollution Hearing Board, so want to thank both of them for their service. So, with that, we do have a motion and a second. Did we get a second on that?
There we go.
Okay. And we have a second now from Supervisor Hickman. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Under the Industrial Development Authority, we have 59, which is the issuance of bonds for the benefit of Creighton University. And on this one, I do have a note here that Supervisor Chukri will not be participating in that one. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. I will not vote on this.
Okay.
I'm going to refuse myself. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. I did have the opportunity to attend the IDA hearing and hear the presentation from the president of Creighton and his team, and I'm really excited about this project. It is in District Three, in the Park Central Mall area. Actually, the construction has already begun on this. A wonderful project for that area, a very important area within the city of Phoenix and within Maricopa County, and as well with the new doctors and the new residents who will be coming to Maricopa County as a result of this project. Really appreciate the IDA for their leadership on this. So, with that, would entertain a motion on item 59.
Motion to approve item number 59, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman.
I will second that motion, and I really do look forward to this type of project. The universe, the Creighton University is going to be there. You know what, we talk, we talk about this all the time. We're the fourth fastest-growing county, the city of Phoenix is fifth largest, and to have another medical training facility in our city to help, exactly what you said, you know, start to train some of our doctors and nurses, I think is awesome. I know, I was invited to the ribbon-cutting ceremony, but it was the exact same time as our D-Back Jam, so I wasn't able to make it. But I drive by Park Central all the time, not just for the Starbucks, I actually go in there for other stuff. But it's exciting to see what's going on in that area, and this is an exciting project. So, thank you Shelby and the IDA for being part of it.
And the other thing I would add on this, too, is, again, Creighton University is located in Omaha, Nebraska. So, they could have gone anywhere, and they chose to come to Maricopa County to open this medical school. So, I think that says a lot about what's going on in this community and the opportunities that are ahead for us. So, again, with that, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes. Under Clerk of the Board, under Setting of Hearings, we have 60, Public Service Franchise for Sprint Communications Company, LP. And 61, Petitions to Form Fraser Fields Irrigation Water Delivery District. Under Planning and Development, we have 62, Planning and Zoning Cases. The board will now consider items 60 through 62. Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. On the Consent Agenda, we have 63, Cost Per Felony Case Annual Report. 64 through 66 are donations. 67, Duplicate Warrants. 68, Head Start Monthly Report. 69, Stale Dated Warrants. 70 through, or 70 is Secured and Unsecured Tax Rule Corrections. 71, Tax Abatements. 72, Settlement and Resolution of Property Tax Cases and Claims. And 73, Precinct Commitment. The board will now consider items 63 through 73.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval of item 63 and even 73. You know, it's, we've received a couple of calls in regards to a couple of stories that have been printed, and just having to set the facts straight with some of our callers. But nonetheless, we read the statute. Statutes are pretty clear. It's an administrative-type item. But nonetheless, it just raises the question of why it's on our agenda. You know, statute's real clear that we shall approve the list as provided by the political parties. But nonetheless, I think it just raises that question, why is it coming to our level? But nonetheless, I'd make the motion to approve 63 to 73.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? That motion passes. Now, we move on to the addendum. Under the County Attorney, A1, Appropriation Adjustment for the Sheriff. A2, Agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS. And under Adult Probation, we have to amend the lease agreement with the Arizona Department of Administration. The board will now consider items A1 through A3.
Mr. Chairman, I will approve items number A1 through A3. And just a quick note on A3. The facility that we have right now that we lease from the state apparently is utilized by the Garfield Neighborhood Association. They have reached out to me. They had some concerns, but we are working with the Neighborhood Garfield Association leadership. So, for those that may be listening from Garfield, we are working on it. We'll deal with some of their issues. I'll try and help as much as I can to deal with some of their concerns.
Excellent. Thank you. Motion and a second. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Next, under the, we will recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. And thanks to the flood control, as we're getting all this rain here, thank goodness after many, many days. Thanks for all the great work that they do in keeping our community safe. We have F1, which is to amend an agreement with Keith Flake, and F2, Easement Right-of-Way and Relocation Assistance Documents. The board will now consider items F1 and F2. Thank you, Supervisor Sellers. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Hickman. Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye? All opposed? That motion passes unanimously. And now, we'll adjourn as the Flood Control District Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. And this is the time that we provide for public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker slips today?
Yes, we do.
All right. And just a reminder, as we start to invite people to come up, just a reminder that under the Arizona statutes, the Board is prohibited from responding to any of the comments that are made. We may follow up with you via the County Manager or other folks from the Board, or other folks from Maricopa County. But again, we're not able to respond from the dais here. First speaker today is Lorena Bader. And again, a reminder too, we have two minutes on the clock.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The unintended consequence of firing us from volunteering is that in attempting to silence our voices, the opposite has happened. We no longer fear speaking about the serious issues that need addressed at Maricopa County Animal Care and Control. We do know that as a result of us and our supporters voicing our concerns, someone is listening. Meetings are being scheduled to address the hostile work environment. A committee has been formed to revamp the decimated volunteer program. Cash donations and donated items are being tracked and accounted for. These changes are a move in the right direction, but there is much more that you will hear about in the coming weeks. Today, the main topic will be euthanasia, which I helped with for over a year. During that time, I felt Maricopa County was moving in the right direction. We had a small team that met every day and worked hard to find appropriate outlets for the most at-risk dogs. I hated ending the life of a dog. However, I knew that some dogs were dangerous, some were deteriorating to the point that they were suffering, and some were just too sick or too old to remain in the shelter. As much as it broke my heart, I also felt that every dog did deserve to experience kindness and compassion in their final moments. You will hear about the last day that I was ever involved. Our process was thrown out the window by Director Mary Martin, and I lost all trust in her decision-making ability under stress. Maricopa County needs a euthanasia team and a formal protocol. Developing a protocol does not mean that more dogs need to be killed. It means that more people who have a part in the decision-making, and there is a systematic, rational method of making sure a dog has been given every possible chance while still keeping our community safe. It will protect both the people and the animals from individuals making poor decisions. Is a leader in animal sheltering and has a detailed protocol. Pinell County just adopted one, and now Maricopa County must do it. We need to move into the 21st century of animal welfare, both for the humans and for the animals in our care. Thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us. Next is Jordan Bader.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm also going to talk about that euthanasia process that they go through. On the afternoon of July 4th, 2018, we saw that Mary Martin had thrown 12 dogs on the euthanasia list with no warning. We immediately went into action to try to find homes for the ones we had spent months with. We were in complete panic because some of them were long timers and we knew them well. We typically knew the dogs that were going to be E-listed, so we could let those networking get a head start on getting them out. This time, we were given no warning. We emailed Mary Martin the following morning to ask her if we could have additional day because we weren't even given 24 hours. Her response was she wasn't giving us any time. We had found out that we had three adopters coming for dogs, so Lorena went straight to the euthanasia room to tell Mary Martin. When she got there, Mary Martin said it was too late, although the dogs hadn't been killed. She tried to explain that we were working hardest and it wasn't fair that she had changed the rules. She told Lorena that she needed to leave. This example shows how dangerous and irrational Mary's decisions are. She will allow dangerous dogs to be adopted by some of her favorite people like Laura Zandell and Dominic Anthony, who has 52 animal cruelty charges against him, but can't support the volunteers who have spent months working and caring for other dogs. So, when MCACC claims they have a 95% save rate, you need to give credit to the volunteers who go to extraordinary lengths to save dogs that don't pose a risk at public, a risk to public safety. During that incident, Mary Martin's friend Suzanne Fuqua, who said she hired at MCACC, who was also employed at Santa Fe with her, called this Hurricane Mary. Apparently, these kind of irrational decisions are made whenever Mary gets stressed. If it isn't already obvious, firing the three of us was also an irrational decision that has brought a tremendous amount of harm to the reputation of MCACC. How can you support and stand by a director that operates like this?
Thank you very much for joining us today. Next is Erica Edmark.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to discuss the lack of euthanasia protocol at MCACC and the consequences of allowing the decision to kill an animal to be determined by the whims and moods of the Director Mary Martin. I could talk about the many dogs that didn't need to die or that were scheduled for euthanasia based on an assessment that was later proved incorrect, but I won't. I understand that this is likely a non-issue to the Board. Mary keeps the save rate at acceptable levels, and that's all there is to it. What you might care about, however, are when her whims and decisions go the other direction and dogs who should have never left the shelter are adopted out despite recommendations from the Behavior Team. In the past five months, two dangerous dogs labeled as New Hope Only, meaning they can only be released to a New Hope Rescue approved by you, the Board, have been adopted out by Mary, overriding the decision of the Behavior Team. Both of these dogs went on to viciously maul four different people over the last few months. These were not single bites. These were attacks that by account carried on for three to 10 minutes until help could be provided. In both instances, or in all instances, the same person was involved. Ironically, it was the volunteer who shared the out-of-context screenshots that resulted in our firing. Buddha was adopted to Laura Zandell, and due to her deception, he was able to viciously attack three people before he was shot to death by his last victim. All three of Buddha's victims required surgery. The amount of suffering that came from the decision to break policy is devastating. Not having learned a lesson from this, Tank was adopted to a person who got involved at the request of Laura Zandell, and the adoption was approved by Mary Martin. Two weeks ago, he viciously mauled a volunteer at the boarding facility that he was in, completely shredding her arm. At the time of this writing, she is still in the hospital about to have her fifth surgery. She still might lose her arm or her life due to multiple infections and sepsis, and her medical costs are over $1 million. These are the kinds of decisions your director is making. If that doesn't make you question her judgment even a little, I don't know what will. I have pictures.
Thank you very much. Next is Andrea Alden.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning. We've been talking a lot about the areas in which Maricopa County Animal Care and Control is lacking. Today, I want to share with you some of the ideas of Pima Animal Care Center's Director who demonstrates how proactive leadership can change the culture and the outcomes of a large municipal shelter. They are proactive, rather than reactive, about saving the lives of medium and large dogs, who make up the majority of the dogs in our shelter, which is not the approach currently taken at MCACC. Just euthanizing more dogs is not going to solve the problem, and it will not be accepted by the shelter staff, the volunteers, or the public. So, here are some of the ways that Pima is improving things for the people and the animals of their county. One, more accessible resources for shelters regarding field intake, sheltering, and outcomes. With high turnover in shelters, this kind of info needs to be at our fingertips. Playgroups, foster, cohousing, enrichment, marketing, open adoptions, these are all inexpensive and easy solutions that any shelter can do right now. Two, more resources dedicated to outcomes. Most shelters only dedicate about 5% to 10% of their total staff to outcomes, foster, rescue, transport, and adoption, and that's not enough. Three, partnerships with university colleges like public health, sociology, social work, veterinary medicine, et cetera, to study what strategies and programs are most effective at creating safe, humane, lifesaving communities. We need more research, not more speculation, and not more emotions-based decision-making. Four, apprenticeships and other educational opportunities for industry leaders to learn how to build animal service organizations that serve big dogs. Organizations like Matty's Fund are leading the way on demonstrating the power of apprenticeships. Five, working closely with insurance companies, social service agencies, and rental companies and other groups who have the power to make people able to keep or get a medium or large dog. Six, establish meaningful performance indicators based on what the shelters are best, the best shelters are accomplishing. Seven, figure out how to transport big dogs. Right now, they're often excluded in transport efforts. There is a better way, and Pima County is leading the charge. We can and should do better, and it would be possible with the right leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Hailey Hannigan?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted to let you know that a plea was put out by the West Shelter Manager, John Reynolds, this morning stating, "Good morning, everyone. If anyone could come in this morning to help in any capacity, we would greatly appreciate it. We only have one spot cleaner and no one in our gallery of cats because they're out sick." Just so you know, there's one spot cleaner for the entire West Shelter today. Three Maricopa Animal Care and Control volunteers were asked not to return last week because of their own actions. The three were part of a conversation on social media platform where they conspired to undermine the animal care operation and denigrate county employees. This type of behavior from employees or volunteers will not be tolerated. That was an excerpt from the email MCACC's current volunteer coordinator sent out to the mailing list of animal control regarding the dismissal of volunteers over the summer. Now, this is an excerpt from the report you commissioned to evaluate MCACC. Many leaders in the department are perceived as being autocratic and from a bygone era, who are not earnestly interested in enlisting department employees in the mission of the organization, more of a command and control approach as opposed to a create and cultivate style of leading. A serious lack of trust is rampant and evident between frontline employees and mid-managers towards the director and those in senior management positions. Another excerpt from that report mentions the following. Strong and passionate comments were shared regarding unprofessional conduct occasionally displayed in front of the employees by those in management roles. A large number of employees expressed serious concerns with the rapidity and frequency of almost daily changes to the work process with little to no notification. Favoritism shown to friends of Mary and a serious lack of communication by leadership team to employees is evident. So, I have a few questions, just two questions for you, the Board today. First, if the punishment for a handful of private comments made between friends is their immediate dismissal, what is the punishment for a $15,024 page indictment of an autocratic, nepotistic, apathetic director? Oh, that's right, you have her back, so there won't be one. My second question is, who's really undermining MCACC?
Thank you. Deborah Taurus Faust? All right, thank you. And the last is Amy Farner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm just going to start by saying I am a District Five resident. July 4th, 2018, I was the volunteer coordinator for MCACC and helped lead a special public event during the fireworks, calming the canines. There were several dogs volunteers were concerned wouldn't enjoy the event because of simple reasons like being shy, or scared, or nervous, and we aimed to limit their distress. Mary Martin and Suzanne Fuqua agreed to hang blankets on these kennels. The next morning, several volunteers contacted me because those exact dogs, the low-hanging fruit, were scheduled to die by 1:00 PM. I rushed into the shelter to try to sort out the confusion. I was met with crying, hopeless volunteers since we only had two hours to save seven well-known, safe, healthy dogs. After the group formed a plan to transport these dogs to a local boarding facility and secured a $1,200 donation for one month of boarding fees, I approached Mary Martin. She agreed to the plan. I asked if we could have till 6:00 PM, which is closing time, to get them out. She said 4:00 PM at the latest, an arbitrary time. Mary then asked me if I was clocked in. I reminded her that I was salaried and was even there on a vacation day, just like the day before, for the event because of lack of staff. She immediately expressed that I must remove myself from the volunteers and build a wall between them and me. To repeat, the volunteer coordinator was asked to build a wall between them and the volunteers, not a positive approach for a healthy volunteer program anywhere. Unbeknownst to me, the operations manager and head animal control officer thought the ordeal was insane, even for MCACC. They coordinated to give us a truck and staff member to transport to the boarding facility. I warned the ACO there may be repercussions for them because they're helping the volunteers with this. They gave me a hug and said not to worry about that because they knew they were doing the right thing for the dogs. All seven saved dogs are alive and in forever homes today. Mary Martin's save rate went up that day, but not because of her leadership abilities or people skills, but because of her tyrannical decision-making that eroded any remaining trust between her, the volunteers, and the volunteer coordinator. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Now, it's time for those of us up here on the dais to make any announcements they have. Ms. Rich? All right. Supervisor Sellers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. At a couple of events recently where we in the East Valley had an opportunity to meet with our state legislators and start talking about and listening to them about priorities for the coming year. We had 12 legislators at the Phoenix East Valley Partnership Board meeting, and we had Senator Sean Bowie and Senator Messnard at our Chandler Public Policy Committee meeting. Exciting thing that happened is the Northrop Grumman Chandler Campus ribbon cutting, 650,000 square foot new building, and really phenomenal facility on the Price Corridor there in Chandler. I had the opportunity to tour the Arizona Pipe Trades Apprenticeship Campus, and it was really fascinating to me because they have things like a clean room training area for welding, and most of the people that go through that end up working at Intel for contractors or whatever because no one else has a training program that prepares welders for working in a clean room environment. So, that was really, really interesting. At Intel, I attended the 25th Anniversary Drone Light Show, which was pretty fascinating, a similar show to what they did at the Super Bowl, did right in the Ocatillo Campus in Chandler. And I attended a couple of things that are beginning our process for creating a smart region. We had an Autonomous Vehicle Summit in Chandler that covered all kinds of autonomous vehicles, not just passenger cars. And then, of course, the one in Phoenix that's coordinated with the help of us and ASU and others. So, pretty exciting. And yesterday, I attended the LISC Phoenix Annual Awards Breakfast. And again, that was a good learning experience for me because I got to see even more of the partnerships that are doing some real positive things in our community in affordable housing and looking at ways to reduce the homelessness in this area. So, exciting stuff. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for that report and all that you do. Supervisor Chukri?
Mr. Chairman, thank you for, again, letting me participate by phone today. I'm in Atlanta at a restaurant conference. We're discussing how we can ban egg production in the United States, and it's going very well. Did you hear that, Clint?
I got you. I appreciate the...
We don't get it.
Support.
I'm sorry to have missed the awards this morning to those very talented county employees. We're very grateful for them, and especially when we get to this milestone of the years they contributed to the county. So, I'm sorry to have missed it, but I wish them all very well and extend my gratitude. And then, since the vote has occurred, Mr. Chairman, I would just echo some of the things you said earlier about Creighton University coming to downtown Phoenix or Midtown Phoenix. And when you look at what is the Arizona of tomorrow really going to be, I think it's just that. And when we see how fast we're growing as a county and the shortage of doctors that's on the horizon and everything associated with that, it's even more meaningful and important that we have them there. So, it's a great time to be the county that we are. And again, thank you for allowing me to participate by phone.
Thank you so much Supervisor Chukri. Safe travels, and you're missing a nice little rainstorm here, I'll tell you. Supervisor Gallardo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. Really want to give a shout out to Flood Control and staff for being with us. We were invited to the Palmcroft Encanal Preservation Neighborhood Meeting. They had a lot of questions around flood control, so we bring the experts. And they joined us one evening last Tuesday or something like that. I can't remember exactly what day, last Tuesday or so. They joined us and they were able to give, along with the city of Phoenix staff on the records, to some of the flooding issues around the Encanal Park, Palmcroft Neighborhood areas and what they're working on. So, that was good. So, shout out to the Flood Control folks for joining us that evening. Our office continues to do office hours. We do, of course, we continue to do our Avondale every Tuesday. We're at the Avondale, the Southwest Justice Center. We continue to do that. But this month, we added two more. We actually had office hours in Buckeye and Hila Bend. And we want to continue, particularly on Hila Bend, start to do that regularly because that is a distance for them to, if they have any questions or comments or concerns, it's better, you know, it's a lot easier for them if we go to them instead of them coming all the way to downtown Phoenix. So, we had our first, really our first one in Hila Bend, and it turned out great, a nice participation. So, thank you, Hila Bend, and the Library District for helping us host that too. So, Library District, thank you so much for helping us there. Tomorrow, we're going to participate with the Adult Probation. They're having their holiday, it's tomorrow, right? Yeah, tomorrow, holiday, or their holiday feeding, I guess, out there in the Garfield neighborhood. They do it every year. They extended an invite to us. We're going out there with basketballs from the Phoenix Suns and toothbrushes for all the kids. So, we look forward to that holiday Thanksgiving Day feeding. And then, on Thanksgiving coming up, wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving. It's always a fun time. It's really, it's always been like the start of the holiday season. It's, I don't know about... He teams up with Food City, so we look forward to that every Thanksgiving Day morning. So we'll be out there. And then Tollisent, at 11:30, we'll be out there, help feeding the community. They have their traditional Tollisent community feeding. They feed like 2,000 people come out to that particular event. So we look forward to that. And then, after that, we will spend time with our families. But happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you for those comments. And Supervisor Gallardo, Julian as well, owns a McDonald's franchise on North 32nd Street and has been one of the supporters of our efforts to revitalize that area as well. So a real community treasure. He really is. He really is. Supervisor Hickman?
Well, speaking of Thanksgiving, yes, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I'll be traveling, representing Maricopa County at the Council Walk down in my wife's hometown of Douglas. So looking forward to that. I would say, just very interesting thing on Saturday occurred. My dad was stationed in Alaska for his Army service. And some of you have heard this before, but he came back home, met my mom, had a family, and my dad made a couple promises to us, which was, "I will never see that white stuff again." It wasn't called stuff, though. So when I finally got to see snow for the first time when my brother had a driver's license and drove us up to Flagstaff, and he also said, "I am not a camper. I did that in the Army. I will never take you guys camping. You're not going to like it." So I've never, I've never really gone camping either, until I saw what Maricopa County Parks now has to offer in the white tanks. They developed a campground with the taxpayer money, but mostly because of fees and people using it. And I got to see, who's a partner of the county, REI, did this spread on this campground, which is everything you would think you would need. I think the only thing wasn't there was a refrigerator, but that had some possibilities at the, at the new building they put up on this campsite. It's really cool. And I think, I'm trying to talk District 4 into going and doing that. REI sets it all up, including the guy that will make the hot dogs and hamburgers. That will make my wife happy. So, thank you RJ for doing that. A little spin leads to great things, and it's, it's nice to see that happening up there. And with that, happy Thanksgiving, everybody, and we'll see you when you get back.
Great. And I would echo that as well. Happy Thanksgiving. Hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving out there and in time with their families. And also, just kind of following up on what Supervisor Sellers mentioned, I had the opportunity last Thursday night to attend a gala event for the Smart Region effort, which is, you know, one of my priorities as chair this year. And we had over 200 people there, folks from around the county, industry representatives. I spoke on a panel that evening with Mayor Daniels from the East Valley, who's been another leader on the Smart City effort, as well as the head of the Gilbert Chandler Community College. ASU was represented as well, and I had the opportunity that evening to roll out the new name for this effort, the 22 cities and towns around Maricopa County, and hopefully, Maricopa County will also participate in that. And the new name for that is The Connective. So it's one of those, you know, hip, hip terms, but I think it really does communicate, which was discussed that evening, that there is a level of partnership in this county between the public sector and the private sector, which is really unparalleled among large metro regions throughout the nation. So really excited about that effort and appreciate everyone's coming together on this and helping cement Maricopa County as a leader with the Smart Region effort. So again, thanks to everyone for being here today, and this meeting is adjourned.